Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order. It is Thursday, August 25th, 6:30 PM. We are meeting in the middle school auditorium. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wickston, who is also taking minutes for the meeting. Would we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting with some sad news, unfortunately, that Michael Collins, a former teacher at Wareham High School, who we recognized at our last meeting, I'm fortunate to be able to recognize him at his last meeting, passed away this past week as he lost his battle with cancer. Mr. Collins taught social studies and history at Wareham High School from 2000 to 2014. Started the garden club. He was instrumental in starting the ROTC program, and he was well beloved by many of his students. So I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Michael Collins. Thank you. We are at the public participation part of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to participate? Seeing no one, we will move on to good news. Dr. Schwam?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have a few things I'd like to say that are very good news. One, we have teachers that are continuously becoming more educated every chance that they get. So, one, in May, I believe, defended her dissertation, and that's Nicole Wade. She's a teacher at the middle school, so she's now Dr. Wade. The second is I had the pleasure of being a third reader on another dissertation committee, and it's a pleasure and it's an honor to be able to do that work with people who are writing their dissertation and presenting that. And that honor goes to Harriet Sullivan, who also defended and successfully achieved her doctorate degree, and she's also a middle school teacher. The third one was I was a guest invited to be part of the audience this morning on another defense, and it was just amazing. I was, I really became teary, and I do for every one of them, right? Because it's such a wonderful accomplishment, and they work so hard to get there. But Bethany Chandler, today, just graduated with her doctorate, and so now she is Dr. Chandler, and I just thought it was worth bringing those things up.
Thank you.
I don't know that I would necessarily call it good news, but I did just want to thank the former editor of Wareham Week, Chloe Sheffield, who is moving on, and thank her for all of her meeting attendance and her diligence in covering all things for the school. She will be missed, and we know that Wareham Week is in good hands.
Thank you. Joyce?
I just wanted to thank Dr. DeAndrea for inviting us to the opening day, just yesterday. That's one of my, one of my favorite days of the year, because there's very few other days where you can interact with as many educators and employees of Wareham Public Schools. It's one of my favorite days, so it went really well, I thought, so thank you for that invitation. I was also able to sit in on a safety training this week, which was really interesting. You know, Dr. Schwam was there, and I just wanted to get a look at, you know, the training that the employees get from the police department, so thank you for, for that. That was very interesting. And I also had the opportunity this past weekend to volunteer at the back-to-school backpack event that was put on by a community organization, Community Youth Empowerment. And this is a group of Wareham High School graduates who are doing amazing things in this community. I was, I kept telling them, I am so impressed by what they're doing. And, you know, I told them, people talk about doing things, talk about doing things in the community, but they're actually doing it. So we should be really, so I told them, I said, please, reach out to me whenever they have something, because their, their goal is to reach out to the students in Wareham Public Schools and do positive things, create experiences for them. So I told them, reach out to me and let me know when you have anything to share, and during this part of the meeting, I'd be happy to share it. So going forward, I look forward to doing that for them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jeff?
So, a mother of, I've got a lot of these, a former tennis player, captain, reached out to me recently. Some of you may remember Nicole Russo. She graduated valedictorian of Wareham High School. She was, I believe, graduated valedictorian of Stonehill, but I know she was valedictorian of Suffolk Law School. She is now clerking for a, the appellate, an appellate court judge for the state of Massachusetts, and is going to be, and is being recruited by two different counties to be a prosecutor, I believe it was Plymouth and Suffolk County, to be a prosecutor in the state of Massachusetts. Anyway, her mother reached out because she is such a believer in the fact that Wareham education can do wonderful things for anybody who wants to commit to getting a good education. And so I will be talking to Dr. DeAndrea and Dr. Schwam and to see how we can use this, because she offered herself, she offered Nicole. I'm not sure Nicole is aware of this, but the bottom line is, she was very proud, not only of her daughter, but also of the education that she had received.
Thank you. April?
We also have one more former Wareham student doing big things and playing in the NFL for the Seattle Seahawks, so that's a pretty big deal with Josh Onagio. So Wareham can lead to really amazing things, as long as these kids put in the work and everything that we have lined up for them.
Absolutely, and I think later on tonight, you'll hear, one of our subcommittees is hoping to go down this road of highlighting individuals like this from our school system going forward. So thank you very much. It's my pleasure right now to introduce our new student representative to the school committee, Indiana Troop, who is a senior this year. So Indiana, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Brajoli, and thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome. I feel like some of you, or most of you, probably knew I'd be up here one day, so very happy to finally be here. So I'll be using the student rep position this year to really help represent our students and keep them informed of different things happening in the schools. So I'll be doing highlights on Instagram of each meeting to make sure they see what's happening at the school committee meetings, working on articles in the school paper and in the Wareham Viking News Blog on important things that we talk about, and also involving students from all schools to help come up with new ideas for the schools, and seeking feedback from them on some of the things we talk about to help guide some of our decisions. So that's that. Some good news, students got their schedules on Monday. A huge, huge shout-out to guidance. Our guidance counselors at the high school are absolutely amazing, especially a huge shout-out to mine, Ms. Granville. She's amazing, and, you know, scheduling is a really tough thing, from the way she explained it to me. I don't think we really understand that, but she sat with me on a meeting and my mom, and we hashed out my schedule and really made it perfect for my senior year, so, and I know she would do that for any student, and I'm sure all the guidance counselors would do the same, so huge shout-out to them. We have a plan for this year to implement a new app for students called Saturn, and this app is basically a student social networking app where you can share your schedules with friends and create and promote school events, so kind of like a Facebook for kids. And so four Wareham students are actually ambassadors for the app, including myself, and it's a social media app, so it's not school-sponsored, it's just for kids, but it's monitored internally by their staff. But it's, it's really cool, and we're hoping that will be a good way to kind of boost school spirit and promote events happening in the schools. So sports are in full swing. Preseason started just this past week, and we do have, I have to give a shout-out to our sports account for the high school, @WHSVikings underscore. It's a student-run account, and we promote different games, stuff like that, and we are looking for student volunteers to help with that account as well. So any students interested, please reach out to help with that. And that's all I got for today.
Thank you, Indiana. All right, next up on the agenda, vote on obsolete furniture.
That is me. So good evening, everyone. In your packet, you should have had a list of some equipment that we would like to have you vote as obsolete. This, this equipment has been deemed obsolete. It's, it's either beyond repair, it's antiquated, this, we cannot donate it. You'll, you'll see that some of the equipment has, has been donated, or we're asking you to, to vote to allow us to donate it. But I can go through, Mr. Chair, would you like me to go through each of the items?
Well, I think we all have them, so if anyone had questions, maybe, they could ask you in regard for those items.
The first one was the, the middle school obsolete list.
Sure. Any questions on that?
Well, I just have one general question. What do we do with it? I'm new, I don't know what, I mean, if we can't repair it or anything, do we recycle it, donate, you said we can't donate it, what does happen to it?
We dispose of it.
Just throw it away? Okay, I'm just, just curious.
Jeff?
Along, along the lines of my question of my colleague, I noticed, Wareham Week probably, that there was an electronics disposal day, I think it was October 1st or something like that, but to dispose of electronics, and I think it was occurring at the high school, not, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
You were?
They, they were asking for a donation, which is fine. That isn't the part, but I share the concern of my colleague, okay, they've got it now, what do they do with it? Because if it goes into a landfill, that's just contaminating the earth. So do we know what's actually happening, especially given the fact that in the next slide, there's 51 tablets, 106 Chromebooks, and 69 monitors, not to mention nine laptops. So a lot of this stuff does have places that I don't even want to send it to China for their landfills.
We dispose of it. I mean, this is the first time I've been through this, but we, I'm confident, and I'll make sure we dispose of it properly.
I appreciate the fact that this question might not have been anticipated, so if you could let the committee know exactly what happens to this stuff at a future meeting, I...
We don't just take it to the dumpster and throw it all...
Oh, I'm sure you don't.
...after you're at the bar.
Is, I realize this might be, you know, changing the procedure, but especially when it comes to stuff like 106 Chromebooks, is there any way that we could either recycle them, or like, does Upper Cape maybe want to use them for one of their technology programs? I see the DVD players, maybe the AV at the high school would want to have it just to tinker around with it. I mean, I can't imagine that, you know, especially 106 Chromebooks are just, even though they may be obsolete to student use, that we can't find some positive use other than just getting rid of them? Is that something we can look into? I don't, I don't know.
Andrea has her hand up.
So with the Chromebooks specifically, Bonnie Lasorsa has partnered with a company that's coming to take care of all of those and take them, and refurbish them, and then get them squared away so that they can be sold back into the community. So she has a program all set up and ready to go that will completely, you know, I guess, address the concerns that you might have.
Yeah, just something like that. I mean, again, like Jeff said, the idea of them just going to a landfill seems environmentally unsafe, but also just kind of a waste.
I understand the concern, but at this time, we're just voting them to be obsolete for our use, correct? And so what happens with them at that point?
Correct.
As you say.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on any of these items?
Move obsolescence.
Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0. Thank you.
May none of us be voted that.
Okay, did that include the, the tech items, since we talked, okay, very good, excellent. And then we have a donation we would ask that you would approve. We have put a refrigeration unit over at the YMCA as we had our summer food program. That was one of the stations that families could receive food, and so we put a refrigeration unit over there that we were not using in the schools. It was an extra piece of equipment. The summer is now coming to the end. We do not need the refrigeration unit back. I believe it was purchased with grant money, and what we would like to do is donate it to the YMCA, and we will have it there next summer when we again have our food program there, rather than taking the refrigeration unit back to the school and having it sit there for the year, and then bring it back next summer.
So I'm happy to move approval. I think it's a great example of community collaboration.
Jeff coming? Jeff?
Yeah, I admit to be mildly conflicted here, because I'm on the board of the Y. Has Debbie Fromgeli agreed to take this gift?
Yes, she has.
That's all I needed to know.
We have a second with April, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0. Thank you.
We have 50 coolers that have been used for breakfast delivery that are obsolete. We have, we have replacement coolers for that task, and we would like to donate the 50 coolers, some to the YMCA, some to onset for Squares Church, Good Shepherd Church in Wareham, and Cambridge Ashburn Ham baseball teams.
Jeff, quick question?
How does a cooler become obsolete?
I believe, what I've been told, is just, it's really old, and it's partially damaged, and...
Sort of characterizes meat.
But they're, they're not human, so...
Partially damaged, but we're still going to donate them to someone who wants them, even though they're damaged.
Yes, that's correct.
So all of these...
They would like them.
All of these recipients have, want to take them.
That's correct.
So we're not putting them in a landfill?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion? April? Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is a report from Dr. Schwam, a kind of a quick strategic plan update. Thank you, Dr. Schwam.
Yes, good evening. I'm very excited, obviously. I don't have a presentation, because I thought we would be in the other rooms, so it's totally on me for not having it all set up. However, I sent you the four slides, so that you could take a look at them at your leisure. We had the honor and privilege to meet with 29 of the leadership team on Thursday and Friday for two days, and for the first time in my history, there was an active superintendent participating in the strategic planning, and it was such a gift for, for me personally, because it just brought a level, and it brought us to the next level. And Dr. DeAndrea noted that there were a couple of things that we could add to make it, to make it better, and he led the team for two days to get us to where we are now. So I'd like him to actually talk about that process a little bit, because it was substantial, and I think it will, it really helped with the overall plan.
Thank you. Thank you also to Mr. Brajoli and Mr. Swett, who were able to join us for a short period of time. So I know there was, there was lots of work done last year in developing this strategic plan, and coming in as a new superintendent, I wanted to have the opportunity to work with the administrative team to really look at what is our purpose as we begin the school year and we begin working together, and we really, the district had already, already had a vision in place that was developed by a team from across all stakeholders last year, and so what we did is we built off of that, off of that, and we, we developed for that team, for our administrative team, our core values, a mission statement, and then once that is done, they began the work of looking at the data from last school year and developing goals that align with the strategic plan. Our strategic plan, as you know, has five pillars, and I don't have them in front of me, but, you know, student learning and social-emotional learning, community are some of those important pillars, and the schools are developing goals that align with those. And so all year long, we will be always looking to our strategic plan, to our vision, mission, and our core values, make sure that we're following them with every decision that we make, that we align ourselves with those pillars. So it was, I found it to be a good couple of days. There were lots of good conversations around what's important for school administrators, what we should be focusing on, and, and I thought it was very productive.
Thank you. All right, next up is...
Quick question.
Sure, Jeff?
I was not there, and I must, I'm looking, I didn't get those four slides.
I just got them.
I just sent them.
Just sent them tonight.
I just sent them.
Oh, okay, so it's not...
Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. My question is, I was not at the meeting long as I would have liked to have been. Could you, an executive summary of what the data actually showed?
Well, the data's pretty complicated, so we had the people who designed the survey from UMass Lowell come, because it's a school quality measure, and it goes pretty deep. And what, what we realized is that we have a long way to go in many regards, as far as our overall school culture, because it's a school quality survey that sort of lets us know all the different elements of how we're doing. In some areas, we're strong, in other areas, we need work, so we started the conversation there. Each...
Quick question. You say we have a long way to go. Is this a long way to go to get to some theoretical level of perfection, or is this a long way to go compared to other school districts?
No, I think we're right where we should be compared to the eight other school districts that participate in this survey. Some places we're better, you know, stronger, and in other places, we, we need to focus more attention, but we're not off the mark at all. When we're comparing ourselves to other people, and it's not, it's not an easy scale to move. It's a Likert scale, and so you, you move, any movement toward growth is good, right, and positive, but it's not, it's not a miracle, right? You have to work for it and toward it and rely on others to look at it. But, but each school was given their own presentation, and in that presentation, there were also other data points that we were given. I mean, we have raw MCAS scores, and I compared those to an old, 2019, converted all of those scores, but they might not be right, because the conversion charts from 2019, and when I asked the commissioner yesterday about that conversion chart, he had to get back to me. So, you know, so it's still early, I guess is my point. So I collected as much data as I possibly could, and then individually gave each group their slide deck, so that they could begin to look at their own data and all of the other elements. So we looked at special ed referrals, discipline referrals, attendance, you know, there were a number of areas that we looked at to decide, how did we do based on the goals that we provided last year, and where do we want to go as a result of that, keeping, just like Dr. DeAndrea said, keeping in mind our core values and our mission, and to get to the vision. So I think it was a, it was robust, and I think it was a very important meeting that we had.
Thank you. Brendan?
May I just ask, is there, and I don't know if this is possible, but is there like maybe a top three areas where we need to work on more than others? And you said we had some strengths, some weaknesses. What would you say are the biggest weaknesses that we should be focusing on, or does that even apply, because there's so much data involved with it?
Well, could I, can we just make a clarification? So this is in preparation for your presentation in November. So in November, there's a special meeting just for this presentation.
You'll have it all?
Yeah. So it's not that they're not giving us the details, it's that they're working on towards that presentation.
Okay, so we'll know more in November. Thank you.
Please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's true, and...
Brendan wasn't here for that, so...
Exactly, and the data, it is kind of interesting, and hard for me to be really definitive right at the moment, because I'd have to go back and recheck and look again, but I think the schools will all have an opportunity to speak about where they feel that they've done very well, and where their challenges might be, and then their goals will depict where they want to go from there, and that data will all be transparent, available to you. You can pick it apart and look at it, you know, I share it every year, so it should be good.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
So last year, I'm sure that we talked about it then, the years prior to last year, test scores were always included in that presentation, and then it was COVID and everything changed, right? So then last year, I don't believe that maybe it was in a different format, but those test scores weren't included, so then we, we had to go to another meeting. So, I mean, we, we set aside this one night for this meeting because it's so important, so I just wanted, it's important that all of that is included. Is that your plan this year?
It depends on, we don't have the scores from MCAS yet.
Right.
So part of the problem is not necessarily on our end, it's getting that information from the state. So part of it's that, and then what we'll do, though, as we did last year, is we'll share all of our internal data. We do that every year. It's all, but it's all on the website, every, every test we take, and so we have a lot of that data, and it will depend, but I really think we should set up for more MCAS geared presentation.
Well, it's not just MCAS, right? At the lower grades, it's different types of testing.
Right, but I do think that's a valuable, I think the school committee would like to have that, right, to have that presentation, because it's public, the press gets a hold of it, you know, it's just a, it's a big deal. So I really think it belongs almost in its own separate category, so to speak, because we don't know where we'll be on November 8th, right? I don't know what information we'll have had, and then what that leads to, and I don't know how much time people will have to look at standards and their comparative analysis and do all the work that they need to do when they, when we do get those scores to really dig in. So it would depend.
All right, well, I guess the only reason I'm asking is because I am very much a creature of habit, and so I look for things, you know, I go back to last year, what, yes. So that's why last year, that was different, and so, you know, that caused me to pause, I don't know about anyone else. So that's why I'm just asking if we're gonna, how we will continue this year.
We're going to, because last year was a new strategic plan, and we had COVID on top of that, what we did was, we used our new strategic plan to create new goals, and all of us just wanted to just walk away from, from it. Like, it was such a, it's just an unbelievably trying experience. So what we'll do this year is do what we've always done. We will compare our, we'll look at data and look at where we are for the goals that we presented last year and you all approved, and then from there, we'll do new goals as a result of that information. So we'll follow the same pattern that we followed in the past.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you. All right, next up is reporter, the director of finance, Kristen Flynn.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few items for a vote for you tonight. The first is the annual student activities vote. So what we need in your packet, you have some sheets that depict some information, the student activity accounts that we have, the authorized designees on the accounts, and the maximum balances of the accounts. So what we'll be asking for is you to vote on the designees, which is the column to the left, this is authorized signer. So at the high school, it's Scott Palladino and Stacy Latin. At the middle school, Tracy Cote and Sandy Pont. At Wareham Elementary, it's Bethany Chandler and Sarah Russo, and at the night school, it's Jane Fondulus. So we'll also ask for a vote on, to continue all of the activities listed. So you have a summary in your packet of each school, and the middle school and the high school has the activities that are included, and the balance as of 7:31. And then you'll also have to vote on any new, on any new groups, which there are four at the high school. The class of 2026, class of 2027, the key club, and the newspaper club. The key club and the newspaper club, as I, it was related to me that they were inadvertently left off last year, so that's why you'll see one of them, I think the newspaper with a small balance. And then finally, you'll also, I'll also ask for a vote on the maximum balance, and this is per the school committee policy, and you'll see the maximum balances that are listed in your packet. So I can take any questions that anyone might have at this time.
So maybe you could just start with, let's just start with the student activities account and the, I'm sorry, with the, yeah, student activities account and the authorized signers. Can we do that first?
Sure.
Just to keep it simple, maybe? Okay, Jeff?
So... So I was looking for a little consistency, which I suspect is not your problem. You were given this information. But A, I, why does the high school not have as a second signer, an assistant principal? I know Stacy does a great job in her role, but she's not an assistant principal. And I guess I would feel a little bit more comfortable because, if there was one, because I know Sandy and Sarah are both assistant principals and have broader responsibilities than Stacy. And why is there no second signature to go along with Jane?
I can certainly find that out, and you're right, I don't, I don't know. I know that at an upcoming meeting, the principals can, perhaps Mr. Palladino can address the high school. There are advisors or stipended positions that are the student activities, you know, person, so I think he can further explain that.
I suspected it was an unfair question for you. I get that completely. Maybe I should direct it to the superintendent. Bottom line is, I would like to defer approving that because I don't like the inconsistency. So I'd like an assistant principal for the high school as a second signature, and I think it's always a mistake not to have a second signer for, for any account. And so someone should join, should join Jane. But that's just my opinion. If my colleagues disagree with me, then that's, that's fine.
Colleagues?
Just the chair.
Yes.
So I'm happy to, to find out the answer to your question of why it's not an assistant principal. There may be a very good reason, so I don't, I don't want to jump to any conclusions. And I agree, probably a second would be a good idea, so we can work on that and we can bring it back together.
I just want to ask, by deferring this vote until we do find the answer to Jeff's question, is that going to cause problems? Is there going to be problems with signing over anything in the meantime?
Well, we have a, we have a meeting in a week, right? So I don't think so. I think we'll be okay.
So we're good for, you can wait a week, you think?
I'm wondering if we can approve each student activity and, you know, and defer the authorized signers, if you could approve the activity, because the student activity policy does state the school committee will approve each student activity annually prior to the start of the school unless activities are new and created during the year. So I'm wondering that.
I don't have a problem moving on and approving the, the individual accounts. I'm just speaking directly to his point about the authorized signers. And if we just deferred that particular vote and voted on everything else, would that cause a problem? Because I mean, I do think it's an important point, but if it's going to cause havoc with the beginning of the school year and getting finances and things signed, then, you know, it's not the hill I want to die on.
The, the policy does go on to state annually, the school committee should authorize any such, any such designees, but it doesn't give a date. It doesn't say like the other one, it doesn't say at the start of the school year. So perhaps, you know, if that's the pleasure of the committee, then next week's meeting could be sufficient.
Right, hopefully like a week won't make that much of a difference. April?
Is there a way that we could approve it pending, you know, approve temporarily pending consultation with the principal and finding a second signer for the PASS program regarding why the second signer for the high school was chosen? And that way, things can move as necessary, and if it needs to be amended, then we could vote to amend it later. That way, it doesn't hinder like things moving forward.
I'm going to turn to, all right, Matt?
I was going to say, or approve the first signers and we'll come back to the second signers in a week.
That seems like a good compromise to me, because then they could get, start their business and we can look back at that.
How many things require two signatures to get expensed though in that week? Is there, do you know, Jamie?
Can I share something else? So the school committee approved Stacy Latin last year. The position is posted every year as an accountant, and somebody had stepped down and resigned, and it was reposted. She was named and recommended for the position, and all of you gave up 500 votes to approve for last year.
So at the high school, maybe only at the high school, it's not just a signer, it's also the person who?
She helps keep the votes.
Okay.
Scott is the designate, and he is the one who's bonded.
Okay.
So then the only thing would be a second signer for the PASS program, just as, to follow suit would be all of the other schools?
I think it's because they, I think they only have one account.
Right, they do.
The high school's managing many different activity accounts. And Jane is the principal, Fondulus is the principal. I think in the past, it was Mr. Marcus who was the coordinator, also assisted with that. But I think there's such little work that's done with it that this, this Fondulus oversees that. That's helpful. And they, the position is a position that they hold for as long as they are in it until they resign. It's not a yearly appointment, it just has to be a five-yearly by year.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what position is that?
Accountant. It's a posting for a position to be the designate of student activity account. It's listed as an accountant. And it was posted twice last year. Someone stepped down, three times actually, summer, fall, and then finally Stacy came on board in December or January.
I do remember that.
So I have total respect for accountancy and value of that person to, especially with the multiple accounts that they exist. That, to me, has nothing to do with who should be the second signer. They're two different roles, they're two different functions. And regardless of what I may or may not have done a year ago, I still think someone with broad responsibility like an assistant principal should be the second signer.
So I will go to the colleagues again here. Maybe we can break this into a couple of steps though. So Kristin, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying we need to approve the student activities first before we worry about any signers?
I believe so. Well, it's, the policy just states that the, the school committee should approve the, annually, each activity prior to the start of the school year. And then if some activities come up during the school year, then it would come to your attention for approval as well.
Right, but the activities mean like?
Right, the clubs. I, that's, that's what I infer that to mean.
Well, perhaps we can start where we get some agreement here for one, for one moment. So we have the list of student activities there at the high school and the middle school. Does anyone have any questions on any of those activities?
I just have a quick question.
Yeah?
Are we voting to approve the activities as listed, or are we voting line by line per activity?
I would say as listed.
Okay, just clarifying.
So do I have a motion to accept the activity? Oh, I'm sorry, Joyce?
I'm sorry, I just have one other question, but I, it would be unfair to ask Kristen. I was hoping that someone from the middle school would be here and be able to answer it. I'm just wondering why the balance in Nature's Classroom is so high. I mean, I understand why we, money is raised towards Nature's Classroom, but I thought it would be more of an in and out, you know?
Is it leftover from them not being able to go with COVID?
Well, I don't know, but that's the question that I would ask. Yeah, because they usually go in the fall though. So that wouldn't have, you know, they would have.
But we can approve the activity without approving the, the balances.
Right, right, that was just my question about the balance.
But that's still a question that we could have when we have the principal here.
So next, next week, as long as we can.
Yeah, I had the same question, so certainly.
Okay, all right.
I was ordering about how the chess club has $900.
Well.
Good for them.
Yeah, but Nature's Classroom is more of a one, once a year, then the kids move on to the next grade.
Yeah.
You know, chess club, they could be enough for four years, so, yeah.
So do I have a motion to accept the current student activities?
I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
Just concerning on the high school, there's this untagged transaction of $473.95 being researched by WHS. I just wanted to know, does anyone have any more information about what?
Not since this, no, they're looking into it, so hopefully next week.
Is it just a deficit of that somewhere?
It just hasn't been allocated to any one of those.
Okay, I didn't know if.
Any one of those clubs, so I think in, in doing her research, she will hopefully have a, an answer for us.
You mentioned that like the newspaper club, and I think you said the key club weren't, were left off the list that year, and I didn't know if maybe that was their funds or something like that.
I'm not sure, right, right, I'm not sure.
I move to accept them.
Jeff?
That brings up a good point. I mean, if someone is signing a check for $473 and they don't know, you know, where, where the money's coming from, which is the same thing, the same, you know, untagged, that, that bothers me. It's not the amount that bothers me, it's the fact that someone's signing a check and they don't know where it's coming from.
So I don't think that's what that means.
What does it mean?
I think it just means that when, because this is what I do during, like Kristen, that they, the money just wasn't assigned to an account in the correct way when you're doing. I don't think it's anything devious, I just think it's an accounting error. I don't think there's a check for that amount of money that someone's signed that they, I think it's just a bookkeeping error that they're looking to correct.
I wasn't suggesting any deviousness.
No, 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 well, I know you didn't use that word, I did, but I think it's just a mistake somewhere in a spreadsheet or a, you know, a calculation that they just haven't identified yet. That's, that's what, I mean, that's what I would.
Brennan?
My only other question was, it said untagged transactions, so I mean, do we know if this is one, 100, I mean, how many tran, is this just the total of those transactions and how many there is, or is that something that's all being looked into?
I think based on what, what was given to me was that it's one transaction that's listed in, I think they use Quicken, and that's what it's called. And it was one, it was one sum, so, and I think it's what, I, you know, without any further information, I agree with Joyce that I think it's something that just wasn't allocated where it needs to be.
So I just wanted to just point out that Kristen is new to the position and coming in, trying to reconcile the former business manager who was then, you know, it was then being held up by the former superintendent. So you had a lot of hands and a lot of documents that may have been doing things differently that she is now trying to reconcile. And I appreciate that you even listed it because someone else may not have and may have brought it up. We found this later, so I appreciate that even though it has no home right now, that you're still acknowledging that it's there. And that we also, I think, need to just kind of remember, there's been a lot of changing of the guards happening, and we should all give ourselves and some of the staff a little grace with some of this as well.
So we have in front of us a list of student activities accounts, correct? Are we looking just at the current accounts or the new accounts also in one?
Yes, the current and the new, please, if that's how you want to vote it.
So do I have a motion to accept the current and new student activity accounts?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500, thank you. So now we go back, I guess, to the, the authorized signers, which we have to vote, but we're going to table that for a week?
Can I move approval of the maximum balances? Sure. I believe that requires a vote.
Correct.
Do we have a second? Do we have up questions?
Well, just, I, as far as the maximum, we're, it says $50,000 here, and the high schools was 61, so are we talking about approving the overage or what exactly are we voting on here?
It's the maximum balance in the checking account, so there's a checking and a savings account, so it's the maximum balance that can exist in the checking account. And what you see here is the total value of the account. So there's a checking account and a savings account. The checking account, the schools write checks out of, and then there's also the savings account that's under the control of the town treasurer.
So what I'm seeing with all these accounts is the savings account?
You're seeing the combined total of both.
Okay. Well, do, as it's listed here, does it, are we under those? You know, if we vote for $50,000 as the maximum, does this club, does this, does this fit in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And those are stipulated by the school committee policy as well, the maximum balances. But it just, we just have to vote them annually.
So Jeff made the motion, Brennan seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 500. Thank you. So I guess what we are waiting on then is going to be the actual signers. Is that correct?
Correct.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So is it, am I correct, Kristen, when I say that the second signer is just someone else who can sign the checks in the absence of the first signer? Is that, is that correct?
I think the policy does state, checks written over the amount of $1,000 require two authorized signatures at the elementary school and middle school, the principal and the authorized signatory on the student activity checking account. At the high school, all checks require two signatures, the principal and the authorized signatory on the student activity checking account.
Okay, so if they want to use the account, they need?
The high school does, yes.
Okay, and that does not apply to the PASS program?
Not, it doesn't say anything about authorized signers in the policy for PASS. It just discusses at the elementary and middle school, if a check is over $1,000, then it needs two signatures.
Okay, got it.
So they, they need a check for over $1,000, they have to wait until next week?
That's.
Okay. April?
So you just read in the policy that it says designated signing. It doesn't say specifically that it should or shouldn't be a vice principal. So can, if, if Jeff agrees, would this be something that we could put on, possibly to be looked at by the policy review committee this year and have that adjusted and vote for it as is and as it states in the current policy as a, what is the designate that is there? And then we can also look to possibly add wording to incorporate the PASS in that policy as well?
Jeff, the question was to you.
I feel that there's been much ado about a small thing, so I'm, I'm more than willing to, I think you're chair of the policy review.
I am.
Okay, so that, that's fine. But I do have a quick question about the PASS. So there is no limit on the size of the check that Jane could write if, if the balance is high enough?
I don't see anything in the policy that addresses such, no.
So that would have to be addressed in the policy as well?
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So then based on current policy, we could authorize these signatures right now, these signers, and then the policy subcommittee will look at it to decide and make a recommendation to us later on this school year. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to accept the signers?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 500. We got there, thank you.
Thank you. So I have one budget transfer that requires your review and approval tonight. It's a transfer into a technology infrastructure line to purchase some items that are going to be purchased through the E-Rate program. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with E-Rate, but it's a program for schools and libraries that provides funding, and schools and libraries eligible to apply, and they are awarded funding for eligible expenses such as internet, telecommunications, infrastructure, based on their number of students and their free lunch participation. So when you go through the, the approval process, and I believe Wareham had a technology consultant that, an E-Rate consultant that helped us with this, and that's not uncommon. A lot of schools do that. It's a very arduous process to do, and it takes somebody with a lot of specific knowledge and, and technical knowledge to do. So for this particular work, we were funded at 85%, meaning that the cost to Wareham Public Schools for these items that the technology director is looking to purchase is only 15% of the total cost. So it's a, it's a very good program. It's worth the time and effort to certainly apply for. And again, you can get discounts on your internet service, your telecom service, internal connections. So for this purchase here, what the technology director is looking to purchase, it's some, some wall-mounted enclosures for the servers, firewalls, licenses, and backup systems. And that, the, where the money is in, in the district technology line, you know, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, that particular line item is not where it really should be charged to. So when we report to the Department of Ed, if someone were to pull the invoices from, if we charged it to that account, it wouldn't be a proper charge. The one where we have the money is administrative technology district wide, and it's costs relating to running the district, computers, printers, copiers, and software. So it's not like your, some of your hardware or some of your, the other stuff like this is. So the account that we need to transfer into is technology infrastructure, support, and all other, maintenance and all other, so that would be the more appropriate. So because we're transferring from one Department of Ed cost center to another, from one Department of Ed cost center to another, that requires school committee review and approval. So, at this time, I ask for that. The purchases that will be made is, the total amount was forty-four thousand dollars approximately, and our cost is approximately, I believe, about twelve, twelve thousand dollars, about twelve thousand dollars our portion. So, the E-Rate funding is thirty-two thousand, and our portion is twelve thousand, so it's an excellent thing to take, you know, opportunity of.
Thank you for that explanation. Question, Jeff?
What are we not going to be able to spend money on now that we've more than cut in half the account from which we're taking the funds?
Well, she had, the technology director explained to me that she had some money in that account anyways for that purpose, it just wasn't, and also she checked with the middle school account, and that was, you know, fine. I said, as long as, let's check with the middle school principal to make sure that that's not going to cause any issues, and it's, it shouldn't be.
Fine, thank you.
And one thing I didn't mention about E-Rate is, I know that when you, part of the program is, is that schools are supposed to budget, say, for the total cost of your internet connection, and then, say, it's twenty thousand, so you have to budget for twenty thousand, and then you have your E-Rate discounted portion, and you pay the vendor directly your cost. So, the difference between your cost and what you budgeted is supposed to remain to be purchased for technology purchases, so it cannot just be redirected towards other things. So, it's to keep, you know, to keep the technology robust.
That's interesting.
So, do we have a motion to approve this transfer?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero, thank you.
Okay.
Next, I have the report of the superintendent.
I believe that's it for me.
Oh, sorry, thank you, thank you, Kristen. Report of the superintendent?
Thank you. First up, I have approval of gifts. We have four gifts that I would like to submit for your consideration. The first is seven unused teacher chairs to the Wareham High School from Plymouth County Federal Credit Union. Do you want to do these one at a time, Mr. Chair?
Let's, because I think there might be some discussion on some of these, so, yes.
One at a time?
I think it actually will save us some time.
Okay.
So, we have a?
So moved, to accept the chairs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero zero, thank you.
Our annual Adobe license of two thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars to the Wareham Public Schools from WCTV. This is something that happens annually.
Thank you, WCTV. We have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded. Oh, question, sorry, Jeff?
I'm surprised that the license is transferable. Kristen, are you surprised that an Adobe license is transferable from one entity to another?
I think it needs to be for, except for state.
Well, that's different.
Yeah.
So, this is, in some ways, mischaracterized. We still appreciate it, but to call it a transfer is, is really, I think, misleading, but the generosity is there.
I don't think it says transfer anywhere, it's acceptance of a gift. Am I wrong?
Well, okay, maybe I heard transfer. Bottom line is, it's, it's an Adobe license to, okay, if it's not a transfer, it's not a transfer. We'll take it.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five zero zero, thank you.
Four or five pallets of floor wax to Wareham Public Schools from Camp Edwards Otis Air Force Base that were picked up today, as a matter of fact.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero, and the last one?
Thank you. Bench flowers and trees to the Wareham High School from the class of 2022 with the remaining funds, class funds, eight thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Questions or comments?
So, I do have a question.
Okay, Joyce?
I was hoping that Mr. Palladino would be here to answer this, so my question is, thanks to Kristen, who did an analysis of our policy and the state guidelines, we do know that the students of the senior class do have a choice with what to do with their money, and I would just like to hear from him that they knew that, that they knew that they could choose to keep some of that money, to give some of that money to another class, as well as, you know, buying these items for the high school. I know that's the tradition, they've been signed, there've been benches, there've tables, outdoor seating, that's been the tradition at the high school. I just, this, this amount jumped out to me as a really large amount, so I just wanted to be sure that the class knew that they had options with that money. And so, in the absence of Mr. Palladino, maybe we could wait until next week to discuss that and ask him, would that be okay?
There's no urgency.
Okay.
Right, so we can just table that one until next week, and Mr. Palladino can answer that question?
Yes. Well, can I just say, did they, these were things that have already been purchased by the class of 2022, or that that's what they're hoping to purchase? I'm just trying to clarify.
Good question.
Thank you. So, they wrote a letter on May twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the class of 2022 has voted to use the remaining funds from their student activities account after all bills have been paid for the class of 2022. For a bench to be added to the outside of the main entrance of the school, any funds available beyond that should be used to plant trees and our flowers around the school. And it's signed, but, not signed, but it has the students' names listed underneath. To April's question, April, I don't know if any, there have been any steps as far as, you know, purchasing the bench at this time, designing the bench, I don't have the answer to that question.
Well, just, if it's like, say hypothetically, like a stone bench that's engraved, it could be a higher cost than a just wooden bench that you wouldn't be as weather resistant, you know what I mean? So, I think that would be dependent on if, I just wasn't sure if things had already been purchased, or if it had already been voted by that class, probably can't go, obviously go backwards and have them recant now that they've all gone on to college or their postgraduate activities. So, I think maybe something to bring up maybe going forward, as Joyce said, to make sure that students know.
Absolutely.
Indy, you're our class president for the seniors, correct?
So, now the senior class is aware.
Jeff? This raises a broader question, which is, we routinely get things to approve as gifts. I wonder how many of those things have already actually happened before they get to this committee? You say, the floor wax has arrived, okay? Well, what if we had said hypothetically, I agree, the odds are really small, but what if we had hypothetically said, nah, we don't accept that? So, it does get to the, to the fundamental question. Do, is this considered to be a perfunctory process and no one even thinks about whether we're going to say yes or no?
It, no, no. I always, so, if you voted no to the wax, we can bring it back tomorrow. We have not used the wax.
But that's a little awkward.
It would, it would be awkward, but for whatever reason, we would say we cannot accept the gift. I have always in the past tried to make sure the school committee vote happens prior to accepting the gift. It doesn't always work that way, because sometimes, yes, sometimes there's urgencies. In my previous position, there was a grand piano that was donated, and they said, the crane is available today, it has to come out of the window, you need, we're taking it, you know, you gotta tell me, Mr. Superintendent, right now, do you want this piano? So, yes, we'll take the piano and hope the school committee says yes. So, it happens.
Okay, but I think Joyce's question is more pertinent, and I'd be happy to know the status of that money before we actually vote.
So, I, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's similar to the, we vote for the payroll and bill warrants after the fact as well, knowing that they've also already been paid. So, I look at the policy very similarly to that with the acceptance of the gifts. I think that, in my opinion, I think that the acceptance of gifts is more of a public acknowledgement that these have been given to us by the generous donors, so that the public is made more aware of it, and I would think that our voting for it is more of a, like a courtesy or a formality than an actual approval.
Yeah, we're not looking for scrutiny or anything.
Like a, more of like a public thank you.
And if that's the case, and I actually don't have any problem with that, then we, perhaps we ought to look at the policy, Madam Chair.
Add it to my list.
And, and give, and give the superintendent the authority to accept the gift and for ours to be an acknowledgement of that gift and a thank you, because...
Changing the wording to presentation of gifts instead of acceptance of gifts?
Exactly, something, something like that.
Well, I do think that there is a difference between accepting a generous gift from Plymouth County Teachers Credit Union of seven shares that they're not using, and eight thousand dollars that was fundraised by students over five years. There, I, there's a big difference between those.
I agree completely, yes.
So, I understand why they're here together, it's just the routine that we do, but there's just a big difference between those.
So, do we want to just wait to fi, I don't think it's gonna change anything that happens in the, in the courtyard right now, to wait the week and get the official vote?
But I think Joyce's principle is well taken, and I support waiting.
Thank you.
I actually just have two small questions about it, just the amount. Is there any limit on the size of a gift that we can receive? You know, if someone wanted to give us, if one class wanted to give us twenty thousand dollars, is that okay, or is there a certain limit on how much we can receive as a gift?
The Gates Foundation wanted to give us twenty million?
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's why we vote, you know what I mean, as opposed to just accepting to make sure we're okay with it. And the other question I had going kind of along with it was, who decides, like, you know, she said the, a stone bench would cost more than another bench, who actually decides how this eight thousand dollar gift that we take, eighty-six hundred dollar gift that we take, how much is spent on the bench and on the flowers and on the trees? What, who does that breakdown? Is that up to the high school?
That's up to the high school, yeah. It seems to, they seem to indicate that the bench could potentially use up all eight thousand, and they're saying that if there's anything left, plant some flowers and trees.
Okay, I'm just curious how that worked.
So, we will table that last one and bring that up next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Approval of payroll and bill warrants, in your, the superintendent newsletter, you saw the, the list of the payroll and the bill warrants, and I ask you to approve them as listed.
Yes, we will not be taking these one by one. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero, thank you.
Thank you. So, back to school update. So, Monday's the big day, the kids are returning. It has been a very busy summer, lots of hiring, hiring has been challenging for the school district, it has been challenging for school districts across the state and the country. There seems to be a shortage in just about every area that we look to hire. But the principals have been working very hard to get their positions filled. They, I spoke with all of them today, they feel that they're ready to go for Monday. There are still a few positions that need to be filled, but we're able to manage until that is done. We had our, as Dr. Schwalm spoke about earlier, we had our administrative meeting where we talked about our strategic plan. It was a good, I think, a good productive two days. The days afterward, Dr. Schwalm led the new teachers, there were approximately fifteen new teachers there, and she put a program together for two days for going through, learning about the district, learning about our strategic plan. They went on a bus tour and saw the town, and so they're, they're ready to go. And then we had our first day back with teachers on Wednesday. Wednesday morning, we all met in the auditorium at the high school, and then they broke out back to their buildings for some professional development and meetings in preparation for the arrival of students on Monday. There is no work tomorrow for the teaching staff, so they have a three-day weekend to rest up and be ready for Monday.
Thank you. Jeff?
Maybe a best directed choice, Dr. Schwalm, but either one of you, how would you describe, in light of all the attention that teacher shortages are getting across the country, how would you describe this year with respect to hiring? I mean, fifteen new teachers, would you have liked to have had twenty, for example?
I, I think Wareham is in good shape, a few comparing us to other districts around. There are some districts that are in a lot of trouble, and we're getting emails from the superintendent groups begging others not to poach from each other and to make phone calls because it's quite competitive out there right now, but I, I think it was actually a lot less this year than last year, to be honest. There were a lot more new staff last year than this current year.
So, the fifteen represented the number that you wanted?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. We were short a couple, but some of those were last minute, and we didn't know about those a couple of days ago, so we're, you know, we've got to figure out a couple of things, but overall, we have a good crew, and I think we're ready to go.
I do, I think we was at the time, the first part of the meeting that I attended that you invited us to, Kevin, I think you were there too, there was, you told this story about you tried to recruit from, from Wareham, and the teacher said, no, Wareham needs me. And I thought it was a powerful story, and I wondered, is our recruitment, is our, hiring of our teachers, I've been dealing, all of us have been dealing with the unjustified reputation that Wareham has in some respects, okay? But do you, have you discovered in the hiring process of these teachers that in fact people want to work here as compared to other districts?
Well, I mean, I recruited a student I had as a principal from Falmouth, so, and she's phenomenal, she just graduated, and she's unbelievably smart, she's, she, she went to four or five different schools, and I wanted her here badly, so she, she's here. So, I mean, I think, interestingly, and she lives in Falmouth, and there's an opening in Falmouth, so, and she's still here. So, I think there's a lot of good that's happening, and people are very surprised by the quality of programs and technology and services and the care that staff show students. There's a lot to be impressed with in Wareham, and the reputation is undeserved.
Yeah, I get, I certainly, I certainly get that. So, the bottom line is, you two are making me feel like we not only have the number, but the quality of the people we need to keep, to keep the momentum going.
Yes, and, you know, people that we've hired, this, this is my first time going through the hiring here in Wareham, and they come for lots of different reasons. Some people are just looking for a change, some want to come to Wareham, others are, are, you know, specific to the position, things like that, opportunities. I am used to, on the vineyard, we always had big turnover because if people get out and live on an island, say, I don't want to live on an island, and it's extraordinarily expensive, housing is scarce, it's expensive, and they, they just head for the hills. So, this is a small number, we usually have like twenty-five to thirty new teachers a year there. So, but I think that, you know, the principals have been on it, they, they do get good candidates, and they've made some very good hires. So, the high school, I think, has two or three positions left that they're looking to fill, but outside of that, I think we're in good, good shape.
And the updates that you sent us, by the way, thank you for those updates, those were implemented for this year.
Correct.
Thank you. Brennan?
I just had a question, noticing the positions that seemed, that were passed out in yellow, said the ones that were not filled. I noticed that most of them were special ed or paraprofessionals. I was just wondering, is that a particular area that, you know, most districts are having problems hiring in? Is there a particular challenge? I mean, off the top of my head, I would assume... I mean, off the top of my head, I would assume that, I know that when it comes to budget cuts, the idea is that, you know, that's one of the first areas that gets cut. So, is that why are people, are applicants like afraid to move into there because they feel like they'll get cut, or what, what seems to be the biggest drawback in getting those positions filled?
The, it's, yeah, it's the number of people who, who apply. So, i- if you, you know, historically, there's lots of elementary teachers out there. If you put an, add in paper for an elementary 1 through 6 teacher, you're going to get a lot of applicants. If you put an, an advertisement in the paper for a high school chemistry teacher, you'll probably get none.
Yeah.
Sped, special education is, they're tougher to find also. There's more than high school chemistry, but, but certainly less than.
Quality candidates too are, you know, even harder.
So, it depends on the position, some positions, there's lots of folks out there, and others, there's not.
Now, considering, I know from feedback I've gotten from the community is that our special ed department, many people feel it's kind of neglected, it's kind of like the, you know, the stepchild of the family. Is there anything you think that we could do or should be doing to be a little bit more robust in our hiring of those professionals, or are we just kind of doing what the market, you know, what the job market dictates?
Uh, well, I have, I, I haven't gotten that impression that, that it's, it's neglected. We certainly.
I don't think it is, I think it's just that there's an impression, much like we've said that the reputation of Wareham Public Schools is absolutely undeserved.
Right.
With a child in special needs and in the SPED program myself, I have never had a problem of any kind with it. So, when I hear that, I'm, you know, taken aback by it because I've never experienced it, but again, it's a reputation we need to overcome. And I was just wondering if the job market was the problem, if it was in what we all, you know, kind of what the biggest hurdle is, and if it's something that we specifically face, or if it's something that all schools seem to be facing just because of the nature of the position?
It's, it's all schools and the nature of the position.
And our special education department is unbelievable.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying.
They are unbelievable. So, just, the people we do have in place are, are fantastic.
Absolutely, and I want them to be supported as much as possible, which is why when I see that there's six or seven positions not filled, you know, I want them to have that support, so I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to help that along, or, I mean, I realize too, the marketplace is the marketplace. Like you said, a chemistry teacher is going to be a lot harder to come by than a general one, and a SPED specialist is going to be a lot harder to come by than a regular substitute teacher.
Yeah, we've joined, so, we've, we've joined Bridgewater State in an emergency licensure program specifically for special education. There's a grant through the Department of Ed that we're involved in, and so that message has gone out to teachers who are emergency licensed to then get their special education license as a professional license. So, we're, we've got some things in the works that are happening.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dandy. Anything else?
Uh, yes. I wanted to just touch on the core values piece again. We, Dr. Schwalm and I took the, we put together a sheet of about 50 values, and we passed them out to the, the administrative team when we met with them, and we asked them to pick 10 values that they felt were important to their professional career, and then we asked them to continue to narrow them down, and then had them get into groups, and also, and, and as a group, narrow down the core values, and then as an entire group, we came up with, we tried to come up with three, but we ended up with four. The school committee had representation on the part of that. I just wanted to share with you, there was lots of really good conversation as we looked at the values and debated them and discussed them. The four that the administrative team came up was with was relationships, perseverance, respect, and compassion. And I think they're great core values, I think there was really good debate around others that they felt should be there or could be in there, and it was a good exercise, and it's, it's ones that I think we can certainly, that can help us, help guide us in our work.
Thank you.
And finally, if I may, Mr. Chair. I wanted to just update you, at the last meeting, there was the issue about the health insurance payments to the town. I have met with Derek Sullivan, and he explained to me that there were at, last year, there was a significant amount of hires. Many of them were new hires that impacted the town and the amount of money they budgeted for benefits. And there was an agreement between him and previous superintendent around payments from the district to the town to cover some or all of those benefits. He provided me and Kristen Flynn with a list of all of those hires. Kristen went through them, sorted them out by new hires and replacements, and we had a little bit of a, a different number than the town had around what we should, would be responsible for, for benefits. I've had some interaction with, with Derek Sullivan, and so next week, we're planning to meet Derek, myself, Kristen, and Judy at Town Hall to try to work through that and figure out the exact right number. I'm also looking at our ESER III grant, and I should have soon a better idea of how much money we might have left in that grant to cover that number.
When you said Judy, you meant the accounting?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, ESER can be used for health benefits, so we have, that's a good piece, we need to make sure that was, that was in place. So, I will keep you updated on that. There's a lot of back and forth right now trying to work through it, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna be okay, but I'll get, I'll have more information soon.
Jeff?
So, I take it from that, and I appreciate the update, that you have not agreed on a number for the, for next, for this budget year?
No, we have not agreed.
Thank you.
We appreciate you looking into that, both of you, it was a surprise to, I think, everyone at the table, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Dandy?
Just a quick follow-up.
Sure.
So, when you and Derek agree to a number, is it your opinion that that number needs to be brought to the school committee for approval? I know that's a leading question, but it's an important question.
Well, the school committee needs to approve spending, right? Spending out of the budget, school committee needs to approve it. If, if we use a grant in order to cover that, then really the school committee does not approve that usage, it is the grantor that we would have to get approval from. So, if it's ESER that we're going to take it from, we need to submit a amendment to the grant and ask for their approval to use that money for that purpose. They've already set upfront that they would, that is an allowable use of the money, so I wouldn't anticipate that they would say no. Now, I will, because of this, this situation, I, you know, I will keep you informed of, you know, how we're covering it.
So, your position is that the literally millions of dollars that we got through the various ESER fund distributions, I guess they probably weren't all called ESER, but several of them were, that all of that money was yours to spend and the prior superintendent to spend as you saw fit?
No. There was, that had to be, go through a specific process in order to determine how that money was spent. The Department of Education outlined that, that there had to be stakeholder input.
But I mean specifically as it relates to the school committee's involvement. There may have been state involvement, there may have been other.
They wanted school committee involvement. I don't think there needed to be a school committee vote in order to approve how it was used, but they wanted the school committee being a stakeholder to be part of the process in deciding how it was used.
Thank you.
So, when we voted our budget that we were voting to present to town meeting, and we took into consideration in that budget, the amounts of ESER funds from the various levels that we were awarded, we then voted on that. So, I'm just having a hard time understanding, I, I do understand what you mean, that for that, to use it for that specific purpose, to get the permission from the grantor to use it for medical expenses that we didn't really understand, or insurance benefit that we weren't necessarily aware of, but I do think that whereas the, that affected our overall budget and how we voted, I understand that, you know, the principals would vote positions whether they stayed or go, we understand that aspect of it, but when it affects the overall budget and we've incorporated into that budget, I do believe that our vote would be necessary for a large amount with those grants, because it affects the overall budget, because we moved things around, taking those into consideration.
I, I'm not sure I understand. So, if you, you replaced money from the budget with the grant?
We incorporated that as monies, because we, part of our money, when we have to present our budget at town meeting.
Right.
So, we had to say, well, we can cut X, Y, Z because we have this grant.
Right, right.
Knowing that, as Jeff has pointed out, we have a fiscal cliff awaiting us with these grant monies once they run out. So, we've already had that discussion, but that's affected our budget and the way that we have been able to make it at a percentage that would pass at town meeting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, it's very impactful to what we do as a school committee, for us to be able to know and vote on how those grants are used, because we use that as an indicator for the rest of the budget.
I understand what you're saying. However, to use those grants, we do not need a school committee vote.
So, going forward, we came in this year last year, we approved the final number for the budget. It was a surprise to us that we were $300,000 roughly, potentially in the hole because of disagreement that was made, so we had to find a way to deal with that this year. We're fortunate in a way to have ESER III in our, in a sense, in our back pocket, I believe, to be able to cover that if need be, right? So, you're looking into now how much money we have left in ESER III, correct?
Right. But, but I want, I want to, it, it should, when you get a huge grant like ESER III, it should be a collaborative effort on how that money is going to be spent, and as to April's point, if it's impactful to the budget, there needs to be a discussion and an understanding of how everything is going to be covered, that needs to be covered.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but we had our input as the budget subcommittee, correct, and how we would use some of that, those funds with the superintendent? I, I believe we gave our input regarding that.
Well, there was also a committee that included community members and.
Right. Initially, there was that committee first.
And there was school committee representation on that committee also. Perhaps it was the two of you, but there was school committee representation.
I know I was on one of those committees.
Yeah.
But, okay. All right. Anything else?
That is all I have, thank you.
All right, we have a report of the school committee is next up on the agenda, policy subcommittee in April, you'd like to give us an update, and we know that you have some more things on your table now.
Yes, yeah, we now have two that we will add, thanks. So, we, as a policy subcommittee, we will be meeting on Wednesdays, those dates have been set. They will be on Zoom for, and at 5 o'clock. The dates would be October 12th, November 9th, January 11th, February 8th, and March 8th respectively. We are still looking for two positions on that committee to be filled. We're looking for a high school teacher, which would carry a two-year term, and we're looking for three parents, one from each school, so one from the elementary, one from the middle, and one from the high school to join the policy subcommittee. And for those of them that might be watching, that, what that committee does is reviews policies that may be dated or need to be updated, revise any wording or bring up any concerns to any policies that affect the district, and then those policies as amended or not amended get brought to the school committee. The following meeting, we did pace these meetings to be the Wednesday prior to a school committee meeting so that we could, like, the week before, so that they could be included in the packet and then voted on at the subsequent meeting. So, if you guys have any parents, one per school that you, or you know anyone that is interested, please reach out, and we can get you included on those.
Thank you.
Is it a collective interest to be on the school committee and on one of those?
You are on that committee already.
Oh. Well, I didn't want to.
But you're not, not as a parent, you're on it as a school committee member.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you, April. Next, we have the mask voting delegate.
Don't worry, I'll nominate you.
I'm like, I feel like Tracy Flick right now.
I'm not sure there's any competition, so.
I know.
So, I anticipated this, April, that you would volunteer to be the delegate for the mask conference, which is coming up November 2nd to 5th, I believe, in Hyannis.
Yes.
It's a conference that all superintendents and school committee members are invited to. Do we have anyone that's interested in being an alternate for that?
I know that I was very sad last year, and Jeff had to graciously step in because they moved it from Friday to Saturday last year, but they moved it back, but this year in case, I took off the Saturday, just to make sure. I was off for the whole conference.
I nominate Brennan.
Well, I was going to nominate April as the delegate.
Oh, okay, I second that.
All in favor of April as being the delegate?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero zero. And an alternate, I, I would volunteer as an alternate, but I know I'm not unavailable on November, the first day, November 2nd, I think it is, I would be out of state still, so I could be available the last three days.
It's usually either the Friday, or last year when they ruined my day, it was a Saturday. And for those watching, it, it really is such an amazing process to be a part of. I find that just watching so many people from so many different communities just come together to, with their passion for making things better for students is absolutely unbelievable, and it's like my favorite part of the whole conference.
Would anyone else like to be an alternate? I'll give everyone a, write a first refusal here.
Give me a second to look at the dates, you said it was November what?
I believe it's the 2nd to the 5th.
It's the Friday.
It would, it's usually the Friday, but just in case it might be Saturday.
So, it's just Friday, it's just one day?
Usually, unless they postpone it again to Saturday.
I'll volunteer.
But you would only have to be the alternate if I can't do it.
Yes, that's right.
You might have to fight it for.
You might have to. I'll throw elbows to get in there.
I nominate Brennan to be the alternate.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. No, opposed, astained, five zero zero. Thank you. Next, we have a report out of the Communication and Community Relations Subcommittee, which is a new committee being formed this year, chaired by Joyce this year. Joyce, would you like to share any info on that?
Um, just that we're in the beginning discussions of having a meeting, so I believe it's me and April, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I think that the priority is going to be the website, and so we'll start there. I know there's been a lot of mention tonight about the undeserved reputation of Wareham Public Schools, so that is certainly the, the overlying objective is, you know, to, to address that and, and get the word out. So, we'll look forward to meeting with the two of us and the superintendent, is that true, and then maybe a couple of people from central office?
Correct, yes. Some, a couple of Bonnie and Robin Westberg, and Joan Siemens, and, and then I think from, if, if you would like to maybe start there, and then we can kind of bring in other folks that, that we think need to be part of it.
Sure, yeah, I think, I think that's a good place to start. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm really excited about that. Thank you for creating that position.
Good luck. We have any other business? Jeff?
So, two things. One is, and this is for our student representative, as we approach the first day of school, what is your opinion about the impact, if any, COVID is having on the student body?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think, I think COVID, COVID-19 had an impact on, well, not just students, but everyone, obviously, I think, in certain ways, but I think it. not just students, but everyone, obviously. I think in certain ways. But I think it, I think it affected students very, very, what's the word I'm looking for? Much more than, just because of.
Just so you know, I was looking for future oriented, not past oriented.
Right. And I think, I think there's, I mean, I, I kind of have to go into the past to, to answer the question. But like, if I look back to last year, that was our first full year back. And I know, like after talking to teachers and students, I think, I would say there was some sort of, and the way I've, we've described it between teachers and students is like a loss of motivation almost in certain areas. And it, I think, I, I think it carries over as just a lasting effect. And it's, and it's not all people, it's not all students. But I think, I think that really stems as one of the biggest problems we're facing moving forward after COVID, is that, that loss of motivation in certain things. And I mean, we adjusted to a completely different learning environment for almost a year and a half, two years. And when we're going back to a more normal environment, which is now basically another new environment, because we've adjusted to a different one, and we're going back and forth, and we have old habits from, from different environments that we're carrying back and forth. And like, I mean, workload and completion of work on time. And I mean, like, one of my teachers was saying, this is the most lenient they've ever been. Actually, multiple of my teachers have said that. The most lenient they've been has been this year in their history of their long tenure of teaching. So, and maybe it was just last year, coming back after that year. Maybe it'll, maybe it'll be different this year. But, I mean, I know, speaking for the students, I know we're excited to get back and have a normal, like no mask, very normal year, and do all the things that make high school great. And hopefully that will bring some of that motivation back.
So you're suggesting that rather than COVID having a specific pathology associated with it, there's a psychology that has, that has been retained in some students that needs to be overcome?
I mean, I, I mean, I know myself, like, I'm the first, the first 2020, March 2020, March 13th, 2020, when we went remote, or well, we had the break at first, and then we went remote. I mean, that learning environment was drastically different than your typical classroom environment. And, I mean, given administrators and educators did the best with what they had. But that environment where you're completing work on your own time and on your own schedule, and you don't have to turn in all the assignments or however, is a lot different than the typical school environment where you have due dates and it has to be in by a certain time, or it's missing, or it's a late grade. And it's, it's just a different environment. And I, I mean, everyone adapts to different environments differently, I think, where students as a whole are adapting in a certain way. And I mean, hopefully, hopefully it happened sooner than later that we can adapt back. But, I mean, I think I speak for a lot of people where COVID will have a lasting impact on education as a whole forever, I think.
Wow. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment and a question. First of all, going off what you said, as the representative of all the students, you know, how proud I can say I am, and I'm sure that we all are, of how well so many students did adapt to get that work done. Because as a Wareham graduate myself, if that had happened to me in the middle of my junior or senior year, I wouldn't have known what to do with myself. The one thing I wanted, my question I wanted to ask, besides saying congratulations to you guys for continuing to adapt, is there any particular high school experience that you lost due to COVID that, you know, you get the feeling that people in your class or that, you know, students would want to bring? Is there anything in particular that you missed out on that you wish you could get?
I mean, sure. I, I think like, for the most part, annual events that happened that just didn't happen, like our homecoming and our spirit week and our pep rally. But those were brought back last year. And, I mean, again, they were different. But, I mean, like we had homecoming outdoors, but it was back. And I think, I think that was awesome. We had a pep rally, we had a spirit week, all these things, I mean, in due time when it was safe to do so. But I think, I wouldn't say there's anything, like any big, big thing I missed out on personally. I know, like, experiences.
2021 got the point.
Right, exactly. Missed a lot of their senior events, right. And, I mean, the eighth graders, I mean, we, we brought back the DC trip that year before we, before that all went down. So, exactly. And that was my class, and the class after us kind of, kind of lost.
Yeah, that was my most formative trip of high school.
Yeah. And I, I, I loved the trip too. Hopefully, we can bring that back in the future. But now that things are different. But I think that, right, it's back, perfect.
That's what I meant, was there any, I should have made it a little more clear. Is there any event that has gone that you, that we haven't brought back yet? I mean, these things will all eventually get back to the new normal. But is there any event that is gone that has not come back?
I don't, I mean, not that I can think of off the top of my head. I think we're doing a good job of bringing a lot of stuff back and adding new stuff too. I know our senior class officers are hard at work to bring stuff back and create some new events and some new traditions too, so.
Thank you, Indy, for your insights. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jeff, you have another comment?
Yeah. And the second thing, but thank you, Indy. The second thing was, I participated in the, I think they call it the 10-month walkthrough or audit or warranty or something for the Wareham Elementary School. And two, two things came out of it. One is, I know personally, I was surprised at the problem that we had with the HVAC system and, and the resulting mold, et cetera. It turns out, and I wouldn't have learned this if I hadn't been on that walkthrough, it turns out that it really wasn't, nobody actually made any mistakes. It turns out that the weather we had in August was extraordinary. And the controls that were put in place were designed to do two things. They were designed to do a good job of, of cooling in this particular case, but they were also designed to minimize cost. And because of the extraordinary weather we had, we, those two goals actually conflicted. And that makes sense to me. So the, the short answer to the why we had the problem is, the goal of cost efficiency actually conflicted with getting good cooling. And so we have learned something that when we have extraordinary weather, we actually have to change the software so that it says, oh, this is not normal, and therefore we have to do certain things that will prevent this from happening in the past. So I took some comfort from the fact that it was not, in fact, incompetency or an error on the HVAC people. It was just two goals in conflict. But the second thing, and I'm, my memory may be in error on this, I, I can't, still can't get Uvalde out of my mind. And I still would like to have the police come to a meeting to talk about how, what is being done, whether it's preparations we don't see, whether it's dry runs that we're doing. And I did learn one thing, one thing about the Wareham Elementary School that was, I don't know what the correct term is, mildly disturbing. We have all sorts of security systems in that building. And those of us who were involved in it, Joyce, certainly Joyce and I on, on this committee, and Andrea, know how much we, we were cognizant of making this as secure a building as possible. I found out that some of the teachers are actually sliding something between the door and the opening of the door so that there isn't a problem with people being locked out of the classroom when they, when they leave and want to come back. Well, guess what? That means that in a lockdown, they have to remember to pull that piece out so that an intruder isn't allowed to just walk right into their classroom. Now, there may be also reasons, it may be that 999 times out of 1,000, that's the right thing to do. But I hate the idea that someone has to remember to pull and strip out in order to make sure that the door is locked when an intruder is, is in the building. So that's the sort of thing that I think needs to be discussed.
Well, I think it is being discussed. Would you agree that at the meeting, at the training that we ran, that was addressed, locking doors when you leave the room? So I mean, if they're doing something otherwise, that's not how they're being instructed.
Exactly. So that's the sort of thing, I think we need to devote a little time to that on a school committee presentation so that, and obviously, the principal should be here, and the police should be here. We ought to have a thorough understanding of what we are doing so that, God forbid, if an incident occurs in this district, we don't look back and say, why didn't we talk about that enough?
So I think that's something that Dr. DeAndrea and I can talk about, definitely putting on a future agenda item.
That's all I'm asking for.
Involving the police.
Yes. And we can do that in an executive session. Actually, we should do that in an executive session. There is a, one of the 10 reasons.
Yes, yes.
So, but absolutely.
That makes sense. Great.
And actually, Dr. Schwarm reached out to our SRO today about some opportunities that the state is offering to, to come in and work with the school district and the police department around these types of things, so.
Great. So we'll schedule that for the future, for sure.
I'm glad that executive session, because I was just thinking, that's the last thing we should be talking about, is how our doors operate in the building in a public forum just to be.
Okay, agreed. Any other new business? All right then. Now, just remind everyone, our next meeting is September 1st. The first hour of that meeting is going to be a school committee workshop again on superintendent evaluation. There'll probably be about 15 minutes looking at our norms or operating protocols as well, so that the regular business of the meeting will begin between 7:30 and 7:45 on September 1st. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Physically, where is that meeting? Is it back here?
The meeting should be back at the multi-service center. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 5-0-0. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.